You're in the middle.
Hello.
I still haven't gotten.
Oh, you didn't? So it doesn't matter. I don't care.
Try and get some beer wrong. I have a month wrong.
Open up meetings, Eric. Takes like five minutes.
Oh, nice.
It's on the audit, state audit site.
Oh, for training.
Make sure you have plenty for your.
Oh, I was booked with that. I was booked up. I was like, dang, sorry. It was so much fun.
Lots of their.
Oh, yeah. Oh. No, Brett, we didn't get it this morning.
Is every person at G four?
Were you good ideas?
No, I think we're going to.
I'm just a four. I'm just counting. Do we have a?
So yes, where's Brian's on?
Here you are. Sorry, I was sending confidential emails. Okay. Not confidential emails. Sending emails. Y'all wouldn't be seeing my email.
Yeah, I'm trying to record.
I'm gonna ask a quick question.
Certainly.
I just got an email from Malia about the Otter Collaborative workspace.
Just ignore it. You can ignore it.
That's not something I need to do right now. Okay, cool. Perfect.
No.
Can I remove you?
Yes, please.
Can I remove you from the school?
Okay, so let's just start with. This is January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. It is five oh two P M. Let's do roll call. We'll start with planning.
Malia Collins.
Marcia Hayden, sorry.
Brian Whitney.
That's right. There's just four now.
There are only four members and Amanda Podmore is in excused absence.
Thank you, Marcia.
You're welcome.
Town council.
Linda Sosa.
Britt Hornsby.
We have Jennifer Dobbinla.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
And we have on the meeting as well, Chris McInnany, our legal counsel. And hi, Chris. How are you?
Hi, I'm good. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Chris.
Well, thanks for joining us. There have been these lingering questions from planning and zoning and the council. Sometimes all of it revolves around enforcement challenges and potential solutions. And so we agreed to try to do a joint list, which really ended up, all of us agreeing that planning and zoning is listed for general questions were pretty much addressing what we all. And I think did I give those over to you, Chris? It was a forwarded email with.
You did. And I submitted a reply email earlier today that was sent to you, Anne, and to Erin and to Amanda Podmore, but I it wasn't circulated more broadly. But I'm happy to talk about. I'm happy to talk about those questions. Where would you like to start?
I thought I had a list of the questions.
I have it.
Thank you, Marcia. Marcia, why don't you go ahead and take this one then?
Okay, all right. How are you, Chris?
I'm good.
The questions we sent you were based on some things that have been happening around us and we listed it as kind of examples for you of what was going on. But the questions, if we just use them as talking points, that would be perfect. The first one was, what process do you recommend the commission and town follow when someone seeks a retro, excuse me, seeks a retroactive approval for something that's already been done? Which and and what should the consequences be? So we have had a couple of issues of people coming to us and saying, here's someone, someone turned me in. Here's the paperwork. So we'd love to know.
Okay, it's a common problem. The goal of all code enforcement is compliance, so that when somebody comes to you and actually asks for a permit and gets a permit, that's success in a way, even though it comes late. The real problem is if they they come to you and what they've already done is 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 not acceptable and has to be fixed or corrected in some way. Many jurisdictions will enact rules and regulations that say if you come to us for a permit after you've started construction of whatever stripe, that the permit charge is increased. In some jurisdictions, it's doubled. And and the idea is to encourage people to come to you first, get their permits before they break ground and they do things. But I mean, if somebody's coming to you for a permit and you can, you know, process them and and get everything approved as complying with our with our ordinances, even if it becomes late, I still say that's that's a good thing. So but you may want to consider enacting a higher fee where it's issued retroactively.
But Chris, one of the key issues here would be if this person comes to us with something and we find it not in compliance, we're about to tell them that either they have to what? Take it down, start over, all of those things. And then we get into the argument of I spent the money, which of course is not a legal argument. We know that for for planning and zoning. But how do we face up to some, you know, it's a simple one. If someone says, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know I couldn't move my trailer till you told me I could. Okay, he moved it. It's legal. It's done. But if someone's actually been laying lines and doing things by construction and we find them noncompliant, we're going backwards there and how do you enforce?
So so what do you do then? I mean, first off, if if somebody commences construction without obtaining proper permits, it's at their own risk. They they they're violating the law. And so then the the challenge is to identify the specific deficiencies and come up with a plan to abate them. And it can be, you know, okay, you have constructed this electrical connection that's inadequately sized or in it, you know, whatever it can be, whether it's planning or it's a building code or what have you. I mean, you have to identify a corrective action to flow from that. And and it's it's not easy. It kind of depends on the circumstances. Excuse me, I dropped my pen. I don't know what I do. So and I think you have to go about and fight and try to identify what is done incorrectly and what needs to be fixed. And I always say to local jurisdictions, focus on the health and safety issues. Focus on things like electrical safety, fire safety, plumbing, sanitary facilities, access, those types of things. Those are the things that are of primary importance. If it's a question of some aesthetic criteria, those sometimes are are less important. But I think you have to have a dialogue with landowners and you got to try to identify the stuff that's important. And the other thing I think you got to do is you got to engage in some outreach, you know, publish the fact that you that you have building ordinances, that you have zoning ordinances, and that, for example, land use clearance is required before you go in for a building permit and that new construction requires a building permit. Those types of things. There's a lot of understandings, you know, many people think, well, if I want to remodel my house, I don't have to pull permits. Well, that's not exactly true.
Yeah, no, we we've definitely found that one. Thank you. I don't want to talk about that one. Okay. The the what I think you will do, if it's okay with everybody, is go on to these questions and you guys could interrupt or ask if we haven't answered and then we can use this as the discussion for you. If that's okay. So if we're done with number one for a moment, let's go on to two and see if it brings us some more information. The second question was, what process do you recommend the commission and town follow when an individual or business is knowingly conducting an activity without the proper permit or approval? And what should the consequences be? And it ties into what you were just saying. But it may in fact be based on something that isn't necessarily planning and zoning. We're kind of, one of the things that's happening here is the town and planning and zoning are working together for all enforcement ideas, I think. So if you could, in fact, just kind of tie that in a little bit.
Yeah, okay, so code enforcement is it's it's a thankless job. It is. It's something that generates a lot of controversy in the sense that it it brings citizens into conflict with their government. So what I always say, first and foremost, if you're gonna, if you come across a situation where you have an intentional land use code violation or building code violation, you need to go out and talk to the landowner or the person who's involved in doing whatever it is directly. And you need to inform them that, for example, a building permit is required or or whatever it is, signed permit or make that communication with folks. You know, a personal touch that is non-confrontational, that is focused on compliance often will go a long way towards getting you where you need to go. If that doesn't work, then the next step is to issue a notice of violation. And depending on the type of violation, it it can take different forms. I mean, if it's a building code violation, a building official will oftentimes just issue a stop work order and they'll post it on the premises. Other types of violations, you know, it's typically a written notice of violation to to the landowner. And usually what we do is we issue a notice identifying the specifics of what the what the violation is, giving that party, explaining what they need to do and giving that party a reasonable period of time to come into compliance. A cure period. Sometimes it's thirty days. It can vary depending on the circumstance. And so you you issue that notice and and you give them some time and you work with them. There are and then if you get to a point where you're just not seeing any progress, for example, they don't come in and submit their materials for a permit and they continue working even though they've been told not to to stop. Then the decision is, you know, what ordinance are they violating? And what are the remedies available to the to the jurisdiction? And every ordinance is a little different. Some types of of ordinance violations can be prosecuted as as misdemeanors or municipal offenses, where the fine is could be, or the remedy could be a fine, or even in some say situations, a jail sentence. Many of our ordinances are treated as civil matters. And the remedy that we're seeking in most of those is an injunction that is order, a court order directing somebody to do or not do whatever it is that they're they're engaged in. The default setting is that if if we don't get compliance, we we bring a judicial action to enforce the code or the ordinance, whatever it is. And Utah law is very clear. It's got clearly defined statutory provisions that allow us to to take those actions. Now, what do you do before you bring the lawsuit? You exhaust every avenue you can with the landowner. You try to work with them. Because sometimes there are reasons. Sometimes people don't have enough money. Sometimes you have people that are elderly. You have people that are, they just, they, for whatever reason, they don't understand. And it takes a while to connect. But ultimately, the almost all enforcement is judicial. One thing I always say is that the decision to file a lawsuit of any kind is vested in the governing body, the land use authority. That's the town council. And and so what I tell my other clients is that you want to get council buy-in on a decision to take an enforcement action, because what's going to happen the minute you serve somebody with a lawsuit? Town council members are going to be hearing from that person. You're going to get pushback. And so so I think that, you know, that the there's a continuum from first contact to first notice, you know, notice of violation, exhaustion of those remedies, to taking a judicial enforcement action.
Okay.
And I always say, before you do that, you want to have the council, their blessing.
Oh, yeah, we're handing it off to council. No problem. There's there's a one and two A that I wanted to throw in, but maybe we'll do just what I said and keep going on the ones we listed and then throwing the the little tick off at the end. So number three was, do our ordinances such as zoning codes, sign codes, subdivision, et cetera, exterior lighting, land use, have the proper enforcement mechanisms in place? So meaning, when you helped read through them and send them along, do you feel like we're caught up to where we're supposed to be on enforcement? So if we decide to do that, we have enough to follow? Is that something you can answer or do you have to go reading?
You know, I'm not sure I can answer in every case, but generally speaking, every ordinance that we have adopted has some method of enforcement. And typically, what it says, the typical trend is in those ordinances is that we do civil enforcement, that we that we seek an injunction to stop people from doing whatever it is that's a violation of the ordinance. I a lot of times when you're doing code enforcement, if you bring a criminal action, charge somebody with a misdemeanor offense, that really ticks people off. You know, a lot of times people are business people. They're just trying to get through their day. You know, they don't want to be treated like a criminal. So for the most part, I I've I've tended towards civil enforcement. And so I think we have those tools in most of our ordinances. But we, there's always room to improve upon them, update them and make sure that we have good enough enforcement mechanisms. Because there there are other things that you can do short of judicial enforcement, and maybe we need to try some of those things.
The the little underscore for those three questions that I have that I'll throw in is who's doing what when? We've seen this. We have some violations surround going on where we all report to one another and go, guess what we saw and guess what we, you know, and people have kindly, the the town council has gone out to check on these things. Who? Who says when you go next? And since we don't have an enforcement officer, what do we do till we do?
Yes. Well, first thing is, you know, most jurisdictions have some person who is a point person for code enforcement. And it could be a zoning person. It could be a town council person. But there should be a point person. It's usually a staff member. Because this is typically a staff function where you've got people who are writing the notices and writing, you know, doing the routine stuff. Most enforcement is complaint driven, where you you're not looking for violations, but if you see it or you get a complaint, you take action on it. And I think probably we're at that point where the town needs to maybe have a little more clarity about who's tasked with carrying out those kinds of enforcement tasks. And and, you know, there's a related point to that, and I've had some discussion with the mayor. You know, we have this split and many small towns have this situation where the town issues land use clearances and does its own zoning administration and enforcement. But in terms of construction codes, building codes, that's all handled by San Juan County. That's a common situation. That probably is going to need to change, do to do some changes at the county. And so we may either need to hire someone or contract with a consultant who can perform those functions. Because I will tell you that building code enforcement, especially electrical, framing, plumbing, I mean, it's really important stuff. It does raise health and safety concerns and your average person can't do it. So those are some things we're going to have to think about.
Okay. The last question we had down here is what happens when the commission makes a mistake? As we have written to you once or twice, we okayed a couple of things that didn't go right, that that weren't right. So.
Common problem. It's a common problem. It happens everywhere that people make mistakes. And what I, my advice to code enforcement people is if we if we make a mistake and issue a permit when we shouldn't have, we own it. It's not enough to try to revoke a permit because you something, you made a mistake, particularly if particularly if you, the the party to whom the permit has been issued has already started work and acted in reliance upon that permit. So for example, you issue a permit and says, it says they can build their house on this plot plan on their lot. And you find out later that, oh, no, it doesn't it doesn't comply with setbacks. They're too close to the road or whatever it is, if they've broken ground on it. You're 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 done, as I see it. And I I have my experience with that is I've litigated these cases in state and federal court. And, you know, the landowner is going to say, I have my permit. I I have I have my land use authority. I have an entitlement to proceed with my construction. And and most of the time, they're right. Now, one exception to that is sometimes people will submit a fraudulent application, they'll lie about what they're doing, or they'll, you know, something like that. That's an extreme case. Doesn't happen very often. What I, the lesson in that is that you need to be very careful in your permitting decisions. You need to evaluate things. Make sure that you have all of the correct documentation, the the site plan, the the descriptions for everything that's being done. Because if you issue a permit and then find out you shouldn't have, it's very hard to put the toothpaste back in the bottle, as they say. So and and I'll give you an example of that. I mean, I had a situation years ago in in Moab where a code official issued a signed permit for a hotel. And they submitted an apparently complete application, but it turned out that that what was submitted was, did not comply with the code. And they tried to take that permit back and the the landowner said, no, no way. And we ended up in federal court. And we had arguments, but the judge wasn't buying it. He's saying, look, you're the land use people. You should know better. And so so I'm not afraid to tell you you make a mistake. Most of the time, that ship has sailed and there's very little you can do. Sometimes you can talk to the landowner and say, look, there's something you need to change or sometimes, but those situations, you know, don't get in that habit.
No, no. And and ours, the main example we had was fairly minor in that it was just a land split with the wrong acreage. So no one got hurt in the deal. It was a zoning mistake. So, you know, we, but but it taught us, I think, not to make those mistakes.
Yeah.
So there wasn't health or safety at risk. Those are the questions we wrote to you. And I think that I will speak for myself, but I think having heard many discussions amongst planning and zoning on my team and the the town council is, we just feel like we're stuck. We've been writing all of these ordinances and working really hard to get them done. And then we look up and people are doing what they want. So I know that you and Erin and Anne have been working on how and when and who to hire to make this work. There goes Erin's day off, you know, whatever.
You're going to have to hire someone.
So I just.
Somebody with a thick skin. You you want somebody with a thick skin because, like I said, it's a it's a thankless job.
So but whatever advice you can give us to make us feel like we're not doing this in vain.
Well, and you know, one thing I'll say is this is a problem in every jurisdiction that I deal with. I mean, every single one. And and it doesn't matter if it's, you know, a big, big community or a small one. The nice thing is you guys are closer to people. You can, you probably know the people. Usually you can talk to them. But nobody likes having a government agent telling them what to do. And so you you got to be, you know, there a certain amount of diplomacy is in order. And and I I always say that we should be compliance oriented. We're not focused on penalties. We don't want to penalize people, shut them down or give them trouble. We want to make sure that they that they're adhering to our ordinances and protecting public health and safety. That's the only reason we're in this game. Or in this business, I should say. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for answering what we've written. And now I will throw it back to Anne to open the floor. No more questions.
Thanks. So does, let's just start with this. Does anyone on the council have any additional questions based on what Chris has said or what the questions were or questions that we didn't have?
I've got my helper here.
That's your enforcer.
So, Linda, ultimately, if people, people are building a house or a business at the end, they would get a certificate of occupancy, right?
Right.
If they're not doing these things, I mean, maybe they're not thinking ahead. That could give them pause to comply.
Yeah, generally speaking, you know, you're not going to issue a certificate of occupancy if there's never been an inspection on a on new construction. And most people, if they're spending any money at all, they want to do it right. And and they're also thinking about, well, what if I want to sell this property down the road? So, yeah, you can withhold certificates of occupancy. One thing you can also do i- in terms of remedies is you can say, look, no other, you're not eligible for any other type of approval if you're not in compliance with code. So if somebody says, I want a building permit, or they build something that's in violation, you can say, no, we're not going to issue that subdivision you want because you haven't fixed that other violation that we told you about. You've got to come into compliance first before you're eligible for other types of approvals and so forth. That's something that you can do. I mean, there's, there's a range of remedies that we can talk about and 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 the idea is not to be heavy handed. It's to make sure that people are, you know, protecting public safety.
Chris, how does one go about, because we live in a town where I will guarantee you that we have multiple houses that do not have certificate of occupancy, never have. How do you issue a certificate of occupancy if you've had a house that's been constructed, lived in, whatever for, I don't know, I'm going to say up to fifty years in the past. How do you? And all of a sudden it comes up for sale? How do you go about issuing a certificate of occupancy for something like that?
It's a really good, a really good point, Britt. It it, the the big problem is that there are often, there's oftentimes historic construction that was done, you know, let's say it was done before the town was incorporated. Maybe it was done under county auspices. Maybe it wasn't approved at all. And it, first off, it may not be necessary. There are plenty of, you know, old houses that you know, did not have building permit approval when they were constructed. What you do is you try to just not repeat the old mistakes. And that is when somebody wants to build a new house or build a substantial addition to an existing structure, you make them get a permit. And you make them get inspections and you make those, and then you issue a certificate of occupancy when those inspections are complete. And so over time, you tend to see these types of problems going away as, you know, building codes are adopted, they are, they're enforced. And, you know, a lot of times, one of the things I see in my practice is that when people sell. times, one of the things I see in my practice is that when people sell property, and they're looking at the property, they wanna see if the work was done right. And sometimes, as a matter of due diligence, they'll say, hey, we need to make sure there's a certificate of occupancy for that addition you put on the back. Sometimes landowners will do that. They'll go to the effort to get the permits and the inspections and bring it into compliance.
Any other questions from the people that are in the room? All right. Who do we have online? Brian? I think you're the only one, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Any questions from your side of the computer?
Oh, no, I think my only question, he kinda touched on, was about the differences in like the town versus county responsibilities and enforcement. I think we're in kind of a odd, you know, it's an odd reality for small towns, I think, that have the county sort of overseeing the building permits, and so they're different, you know, we.
I'll tell you, Brian, I'll tell you that it's a, every small town that has that kind of arrangement, and there are many, many, sometimes they have good working relationships with county building departments, and sometimes not so good. And it's a common problem. And, and then it, there's a reason why every jurisdiction, when it gets to a sufficient size, will wanna bring its code enforcement in-house if it can, because there's always a disconnect between what the county code official wants to do, and what the, the town or city official wants to do. And all I can tell you is that, you know, it's, it's imperfect, what we have right now is imperfect, but probably there'll be some changes as it comes down the road. There was one other thing I wanted to mention to you guys, and that is, you gotta be aware of, for example, non-conforming uses. There are plenty of properties that exist right now that were built before codes were adopted, before ordinances were adopted, and, and those, those uses can continue indefinitely as a non-conforming use. The exceptions are that if somebody, you can't expand that non-conforming use. So if I have an old house that was not permitted, and I wanna turn it into a hotel, or I wanna turn it into a, you know, overnight, other, you know, whatever it is, restaurant, what have you, I need to bring it into compliance with code when I do that. And that would include all the construction codes, plumbing, electrical, and that sort of thing. The other thing is if, if a property that was a non-conforming use gets destroyed, generally speaking, the, the owner has a right to restore it to the condition that existed before, but most of the time, they're gonna do that in a manner that complies with code, and you wanna make sure that.
Luanne, did you have something?
I do have a question. This is Luanne. We have our mics, or our pictures off because we have this fancy little owl thing in the middle, so we're not ignoring you. But my question is, like, the RV ordinance we're considering right now, and one of the things that comes up with these non-conforming ideas is, it can go on indefinitely, even post-sale, is my understanding, but there's the beach on that. If it sells, then does it need to come up to code, or does it just stay existing, whatever it's been doing all along?
It depends on the nature of the non-conformity, but, but let's say, for example, you've got a, an RV park that's been there for 50 years. Generally speaking, even if that RV park does not comply with current ordnance, land use ordinances, a, a non-conforming use can be transferred to a buyer, or, or any other successor. And it can continue forever, as long as it's not abandoned. And abandonment is, is a question of fact sometimes, but, but, but generally speaking, what happens with a lot of those uses is they, they're used for a while, and then eventually somebody makes some significant changes, and in the process, that triggers a land use review and a code compliance issue. As new construction is done, it should be progressing to being code compliant.
All right. Thank you. Because we've gone, discussed that quite a bit.
So, has everybody asked a question to Chris? Okay. Chris, thanks a lot for jumping on with us.
Glad to. And you guys aren't alone. Every jurisdiction has every single one of these problems, so.
Yeah, but our cops are better.
Yeah. And it's just not a, it's not a unique problem.
Thank you, Chris.
It's 5:35.
See you later.
Thanks for your encouragement.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Are we all in favor, say aye? Are we?
Do you have something else?
Don't, don't we have a? It's like. I, I was going to ask, what is the follow-up? But we're, we're in the middle of a question, so go.
That's, that's okay. We pulled up on the, the vote. I think the follow-up is each of us goes back to our, our respective entities, talk about it. And just so everyone is aware, I think they've probably heard this before, changes in Salem County with the building and permitting, everything's out the window. We've been talking to Chris about how to kind of redo that piece, and I'm on a serious mission to figure out how we get a compliant enforcement officer. So that's kind of going to be one of the things I'm really pushing in the next couple of months. So I think it's just stay tuned, Marshall. Let's talk to our respective folks and get back together, maybe have enough information by March.
I would submit that it is likely the Bluff Planning and Zoning will not have a work session on Thursday because this was it. And having said all we've said, we can wait till a real meeting to understand what the next steps are going to be for us. So I will get with Amanda by morning, when she hopefully is feeling better, to determine whether we are having a work session. But we'll base it on this just.
I just have a thought, so I don't slip it down in too long, but on the enforcement person. If we don't have a P&amp;Z person, or an employee that feels like they want to go contact all these people and these families, I just wonder about the building inspector, if we end up with a contracted building inspector. That person could maybe be contracted to do the enforcement, just case by case.
Well, that's what the job entails.
Right, right. But it could be that same person.
Well, the last two complaints have been me doing that, so.
Yes. And you've had success.
Maybe I'll apply for the job.
I don't think you pay.
All right. All in favor, but during, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I'm turning off the recorder, it's 5:38.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, sorry, couldn't be there. I'm flying to Mexico tomorrow morning.
Oh, good. Nice to meet you, baby.
Yeah, exactly. Gracias, muchas gracias.
Make sure you come back.
Oh, we'll be back. I'll be back on Tuesday. We're just doing a little wedding, a little Mexican wedding, so.
Not yours.
No, no. Yeah, babe. All right, bye, guys.
Bye. Thank you all. I'm available to be notary whenever I'm around. It's, it's balloon time, balloon weekend, so blah, 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 blah.
Are you watching?
I'm watching. Go sign.
So as soon as Marshall's done notarizing, we'll, we'll, we're gonna try to wrap this up quickly.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, Luanne?
Yes. Still here.
So has everybody who needed an order re-notarized?
Oh.
All right, then Marshall will.
And Craig's still on, like, if anyone wants to watch, it'll be on YouTube.
Oh, yeah, she'll.
Yeah. I'm turning it on to you.
That one's over there. Thank you.
If I'm not, I'm not, I have to do this. Thank you.
I have a done list.
Thank you for sharing your table with us.
Thank you for joining.
So if that drawing's ready, I'm gonna turn the recorder back on and hustle through this. It is 5:40 PM. This is the Bluff Town Council regular meeting. It's January 14th, 2025. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Britt Hornsby.
Luanne Hook.
John Lauda.
Erin Nelson, sort of as town manager.
The first thing is public comment. There will be a few not timed enough for anyone wishing to make a public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, raise your hand, or put your name in the chat box, or if you're in person, let us know.
I'd really like to make a public comment. Marshall, I just wanna thank you officially on the record as being so amenable to learning what P&amp;Z and doing these work sessions and things, because I think we get a lot done when we do. Just not having to go, what do you think they said? What do you think they said? It's kinda nice. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think we all do, too. Is, we do have three people in the audience. Marshall, I think you told us lunch, you made a comment. Anyone else in the audience wanna make a comment? Do we have anyone online?
I've got folks online. No one has hands raised. Maybe give them 10 to 15 seconds to do so. I know we're powering through these meetings today. I did open the chat box. You can throw your name in there, or raise your hand. All right. Five, four, three, two, one. I'll go ahead and close that chat box for right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. You'll note that there's only unfinished business, trying to keep it short, so the unfinished business number one, discussion and vote on the acceptance of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant for upgrade of electrical, update of lighting in public spaces and buildings, specifically the Bluff Community Center, and the grant was for $27,825. And so, Malia Collins, why do you come back up? Have we got, have you received any final people on that?
We have not.
No. First one was for the PCC for lighting.
Yeah. At this point, I haven't heard anything from them regarding this one. He said that he was dating the contact, said that he was working on the draft. No update from last week with this one. Oh, wait, okay. So for the smaller one, that's the first one we're talking about, for this building. Have you, have you received any updates on that one? We had a draft which went out to council, but nothing passed that one.
Didn't we already motion to accept this grant?
You know, I think we, I think we could accept and approve it, and then just bring it back on for me, just to assign it when we enjoy this package with all the other grants. But I think we can vote accept, so that, when that comes in, we're not stalled.
Motion to accept Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant program for upgrade of electrical and update of lighting in public spaces, buildings, specifically the Bluff Community Center, $27,825.
My second motion. Any discussion? Then all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Number two, will spread very much the same, discussion and vote on acceptance of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant program for the infrastructure for the Cooperative Cultural Center retrofit project, which is $122,616.17.
All right. Maybe send.
Good job. Do we have any paperwork that we need to approve at this point?
No, I've also not received even a draft for this one. I did send in the required documents at the end of last week, so I anticipate probably later on this week, we'll end up getting a draft for this one as well.
I think we can do the same thing, vote to accept it, and then package all these up for signature.
Motion to accept Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant program for infrastructure for the Cooperative Cultural Center retrofit project for $122,616.17.
Second. Any discussion of questions? Then all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. The next is number three, which is a discussion and signing of the conflict of interest forms for the award of architectural services bid for the Cooperative Cultural Center. We started that piece of paper several months back, and that was included in the packet, I believe. Did everybody receive that conflict of interest form, and have you?
Do we need to sign it again?
So, I would.
Do we all sign it?
So, everyone did, so all council members signed it, I believe. However, I would say that a significant amount of time has passed, and so you could either just re-sign to be safe, or if you wanted to say, like, in this meeting, my conflict of interest has not changed, my status has not changed since August of 2024, I don't know if that would be an acceptable way to do it, or if we want to, I'm having tons of printer issues. I mean, I can go get print offs if folks need to make that.
Well, I re-signed mine, but I, I think that stating that since October, or since August of 2024, I had no contact with either of the bidders on the CCC Architectural Services. I have no conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest.
Luanne Hook, I don't have any conflict of interest. I have not had any contact with either potential firm.
I also have had no change in my conflict of interest. I think that does it.
Okay.
Great. So now, we are at, oh, I just lost my attention. Okay, here it is. Number four, discussion and final approval of a bid award to Uncommon Architects for Architectural Services for the Cooperative Cultural Center. I probably could have worded this in a little different way, but it was the consensus of all of us to offer the bid to Uncommon Architects. This would be your opportunity, also, if you wish to rediscuss both of the bids and change the direction. Malia, can you just, or Erin, why don't you just give the, the dollar difference between the two bids and who the second bidder was? Just roughly.
I can tell you that Uncommon is $176,000, and the other bid was Indigenous, mind blank, I can't read. Design Studio and Architecture. And their bid, I apologize for not being very into this.
No, I'm sorry. I caught you off guard.
I've got it. Okay. Okay, so, from Indigenous Design Studio and Architecture, their final bid amount, halfway down, so sorry. Let's see what we have there. This is why we ask for a specific order in the bidding, or in the big packets. Let's see, I told you I have? No, I don't. So 60-page documents. I'm sorry. Not small. Shouldn't have spun that on people.
Well, I don't know that we need to be exact. It was approximately $400,000.
$470,000 is what I remembered, but I don't have it in front of me either. Okay. So, a lot more. Indigenous Design Studio and Architecture bid.
I'm sorry.
Not small. Should not have spun that on people. Well, I don't know that we need to be exact. It was approximately $400,000.
$470 is what I remembered, but I don't have it in front of me either. Okay, so a lot more. Indigenous Design Studio and Architecture bid a total cost of $473,222, $220.44 for this project.
So is there anyone that feels they want to rediscuss all of the points for pros and cons between the two bids? Or are you set to make a recommendation? Or if somebody wants to make a motion?
Motion for final approval of bid award to Uncommon Architects for Architectural Services for the Cooperative Cultural Center.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just say that this was not the extent of the discussion, that we discussed this a lot over several other meetings, and there's been no change.
I would just add that under our procurement policies and under the EPA guidelines, we would have to justify a bid substantially more for the same scope of work. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. And then Malia Collins can take the next step, although she's had a bit in conversation to keep that bid in place from December 31st. Thank you, Malia. All right, number five, report by the town manager of December financials and accounts to pay bills.
All righty, so in your agenda packets today, you all should have received the financial report that Linda sent out. That's the month end for December. And then I also have accounts payable, accounts receivable, as well as our year-to-date staff salaries that we've paid as discussed in early December. And, you know, I will kind of cycle through these reports and what you think is really helpful. It's appreciated if you provide feedback as to the ones you like, you don't like, what you'd like to see. The most important points of discussion are, again, for our routine expenditures, for utilities and things like that, those are paid as they come in, so we can kind of keep up on that billing. But I do have a few accounts payable that I'll need approval to pay the bills tonight. So you can take a look at those accounts payable. For accounts receivable, I did provide the Bluff Senior Center, Beijing Services, their invoice for Q4. And then the invoice for Utah Today Vaquilla for Q4 was also put together. And I know there was a meeting with Janet Sloan, and she today, was that given to her or do I need to send an email with that as well?
No, that was given to Janet, who now is Janet Sloan, woman. There is no one heard, she.
Okay, thanks.
And that was given to her. There was a discussion with Janet about the adjustment made for the project manager's share, which there was not, however, any discussion about when this, the balance would be paid, but there was a discussion.
When's the balance due?
So the balance due is $6,000.
I think that's what it was after two and three, but.
No, it's a little bit lower. See if I brought that one yesterday. I've got it right here. It is $6,243.80, which includes the past due balances as well as the quarter to date, not including Malia's salary.
I don't think there's the appropriate.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So the invoice that's provided to them lists out all of the quarterly charges and then all the overdue dollars. And it was a significant increase because of the propane and the tree trimming this last quarter.
The last ending Q3 balance was $5,968, so it's about $1,000.
Right, but we took off Malia's salary because we are going to go ahead and draw down those EPA funds, so we add something.
I think it's important to note that in quarter two, quarter three, and quarter four, there would have been a total of $17,552 due, and there were nothing that's made.
The one thing that I probably would like to add in the future for any of the accounts receivable are the days past due. I think that's important that you all have that, so I will add that moving forward. Any questions about accounts pay? Oh, the only other thing I was going to add was regarding for accounts receivable are short-term licenses, business licenses. Linda's done a great job of informing folks what's due. They have until the end of the month to get those in, but Linda, we'll come right along on those. Okay, great. So just a friendly reminder there, we have a few more of those coming in. But any questions about accounts payable or can we get a motion to pay the bills?
Question, things open?
I have two points. One of them is the financial report shows that we're halfway done with the year. So when you look at it, you know, look at it, where we are, what we budgeted, we're actually in grade, which we usually are, we're usually pretty close. And the second point, which I need to remember, is we're going to vote on paying those bills. I need to be sure that they're in the minutes. I need to include them in the minutes, which means I would just copy that page, and when I get the minutes, I would just add them. So that's it.
Maybe include those and the, so I've got the invoice register of like, what's already been paid, so all of like, our routine expenses that have already been paid to maybe both of those potentially.
Yeah.
So it's open.
Okay. It's really hard to see. Can you put it up on the screen that the payments to approve, right, and it's too many tides for some reason? It's these. There you go. Thank you. Yeah. It's lovely. Does anybody know?
I don't know that they have, so maybe we need to hold till that work is done. Has anybody got a report that they're cleaned up? I just drove over one, but I don't know what it is.
I have not heard anything about them having been done.
I think just hold off on that one till it's finished. I can do that.
And on those, you know, that one year was very critical because we were getting cows out right now. As long as it doesn't rain, they'll hold till a rainstorm.
So I'll follow up with how person property and see what the status is. Anything else?
Yeah, and that will be more because there's no point cleaning them out. I mean, that was critical because it prevented, you know, yearly expense.
Do you have anything on the accounts receivable?
Accounts receivable are just the two I went over, the Senior Center and Utah Today Vaquilla. Both were invoiced today, and then we are expecting a few more business licenses in, so just waiting for those to come in.
So the 17 is what is actually due.
That includes Malia's salary.
So you did stick that on.
Yes.
But it's not reflected here.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then there was, the top one was Wheeler or something. That was the.
Dark Sky.
It was.
Dark Sky.
Right, Dark Sky, thank you. I knew it was a designer, but just for clarity, yeah. I motion to pay the bills except as we changed them.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then is there any other other?
I do have another. Let's see here, maybe I'll pull myself. We're losing an integral piece of Bluff's community and infrastructure, and hopefully just temporarily, but the Bluff Fire Department's hosting a send-off party for one of their core firefighters. But Dan and Jocelyn have also been active in town with securing grants, the arts festival, recycling, and the Bluff Community Foundation. They're a young family, work online, bring a lot of life and energy to Bluff. They'll be missed at many levels, but there is a send-off gathering. Randy's right after the glow on Saturday, and it's sponsored by the fire department, but everybody's welcome. Send them off on their next adventure.
Okay, anyone other? All right, it is. It's all one, almost made.
Do I have to do another?
Sure.
Okay. So the Quality Assurance Project Plan I have completed, and I'm looking to get it posted tonight or tomorrow morning onto our website and to many other newspapers.
On what?
The Quality Assurance Project Plan. This is basically for the Cooperative Cultural Center for the asbestos mitigation. We're requesting a firm to write this project plan for us and to meet the requirements by the EPA.
Thank you. Perfect. All right.
Do we need to discuss why we canceled the hearing, or is there any reassignment to that hearing that was supposed to be today?
I can address it. There was not completed, there was incomplete information, and I'm going to assume part of the responsibility because there was not particularly clear provision, and notice had not been given to the adjacent landlords, which is in 300 feet of the alley, which meant that there were significantly more property owners than I would make. And so I spoke with Pam Yars by email, and then went over and met with Mike Garish yesterday, and I put in the date of February 4th, I think, for the, you don't have to look, I know it's February 4th.
Okay.
For the next public hearing. And that was the only application we received. And I apologized to the Yarses. It's kind of a, it's our first one, and I want to use the instructions, but I can see where it wasn't all clear. So we'll fix that, and they were fine with it because they weren't ready, well, they're ready to start, but it's not a time sensitive, like, we wouldn't want to delay it, but they were okay with it.
Can I ask one clarifying question, just so folks know? So I know we've got to publish it in website, it'll be in the record. Do we have to publish like, their petition as well, or is it just notice of public hearing?
It's just notice of public hearing, but where I read in conference, and it was the petitioner's obligation to notify the landowners, it didn't specifically say it was theirs. And the way the sentence read, you could have gone any direction. And so what I told Mike I would do is make sure that they got a copy of the ad that we ran, the notice that we ran, so that they could nail it out, and then I would give him the affidavit that they need to sign, because we should have an affidavit, a blank one to hand out to folks. So we needed to do a little more work, and thank goodness it wasn't a construction project that was time sensitive and had to be started tomorrow. Anything else? Okay, I'll try.
They're a little impetuous this weekend. Come out and enjoy the balloons, everyone.
Sounds perfect. This is where we announce whose land, not tough land.
Sure, you want me to give my spiel right now? I can practice it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. I'm turning off the recorder.
Six o'clock, that's not so bad.